Council meeting, I will call the meeting to order and ask McCold to take roll call, please.
Bodie?
Here.
Cacciatore?
Here.
Harvard Montgomery?
Here.
Kroll?
Here.
Rosendahl?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand as you're able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbendale is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Item two is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Rosendahl. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Item three is presentations. We have a proclamation for 2025 Human Rights Day, which I'd like to read. And I know we have some folks from our Human Civil Rights Commission here tonight, and I want to ask them to come up and accept that after I read this. So. Whereas Human Rights Day is observed annually on December 10 to commemorate the adoption of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights by the United Nations General Assembly in 1948. And whereas the city of Urbendale affirms that the inherent dignity and equal rights of all people, and recognizes that the strength of our community depends on ensuring fairness, inclusion, and opportunity for every resident. And whereas Urbendale is committed to fostering an environment where all individuals, regardless of race, color, creed, national origin, religion, age, sex, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity, are treated with respect and have equitable access to housing, employment, education, and public life. And whereas it's more important than ever for local communities to reaffirm their commitment to protecting and advancing human rights for all people. And whereas Human Rights Day provides an opportunity to reflect on progress made, acknowledge the work still ahead, and celebrate the residents, organizations, and public servants who work each day to uphold human rights and civil rights in Urbendale. Now therefore, I, Robert Andaway, Mayor of the City of Urbendale, do hereby proclaim December 10, 2025, as Human Rights Day in Urbendale, and proclaim that our community is stronger and more meaningful when everyone is included, represented, and celebrated for who they are. And I know we have Bethany and Jane from the Civil Rights Commission. I'd like to ask them to come up and accept this.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Bethany Snyder. I'm the Chair of Urbendale Civil Rights Commission. Sorry, I did not prepare any remarks, but formal remarks, but I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the City Council and the mayor for your commitment to all of the citizens of Urbendale, and we appreciate your support of our commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bethany. Thank you, Jane. All right, we are now in citizens forum. This is the opportunity to address the council on something that's not a part of tonight's regular agenda. Would anyone like to address the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. Item five, the adoption of amendments from the November 18 meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Bodie.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Item six is the consent agenda, and we have 22 items for approval tonight.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, we move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. That's item 7.1. It's the public hearing to consider the days run west lots two and three, the square days run plat one. Amendment to the planned unit development master plan at 4,500 to 4,590, 128th Street. The public notice was published in the November 21, 2025. Des Moines Register, ask for any objections to that notice as published.
There were none.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes. And introducing this is our Assistant Community Development Director, Kristi Bales. Kristi?
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To start with an aerial photo, we are at the southwest corner of 128th Street and Meredith Drive. We're going to be talking about these two parcels here that I've highlighted. Just quick reference, it's just north of the Casey's. Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh is Catty Corner over here across from, or across Meredith Drive. Sorry, I'm going to pull up. The use this evening, property zoned PUD, it was rezoned to PUD several years ago. When it was rezoned, it was a multi-purpose PUD. It included the single family, primarily single family here in the middle. Went all the way down to Aurora to include the school, which is now Webster Elementary. At one point, they amended the PUD to allow for these smaller lots detached, single-family townhomes. The most recent PUD amendment was to have a daycare directly west of the southern lot. That happened like right as COVID was starting, and they had a site plan, but that's since expired, and they haven't built it. As you can see, the subject properties are vacant, as is that daycare, but that's kind of some history of the immediate area. There's a multi-tenant office building here behind the Casey's, so you can see that was developed as part of the original project. This is to add, this request is to add a pet boarding facility. And I'm going to share the concept plan and some other details that came in their submission packet, because it's a little bit of a different use. We talked about this use quite a bit at the staff level. So your packet, your council, had more information than you would typically see. The proposed tenant for the overnight facility for dogs is approximately 8,000 square feet. You can see their concept plan, so this is just the PUD amendment to add the use, but we asked for a concept plan as well. If approved, they would have to come back through with a site plan in front of you. But starting with the concept plan, they were showing the building, a couple, or three outdoor fenced play areas as well. They also included with their packet some operational information, and I want to highlight the fence specifically that they would propose to use with their development. We also included in your packet a business description, because it was a little bit different. There's no staffing overnight. The dogs are in there by themselves, and they can talk about that a little bit, but we kind of wanted to talk through the use since it is a little bit different. Currently, there's a retail option for some pet-related things, but it doesn't allow boarding or outdoor kennels. Outdoor kennels would still not be allowed with this, but the boarding would be added if approved. Properties designated as local commercial in our land use plan of the comprehensive plan, and I've put that description of what the local commercial designation typically includes. Staff is recommending approval. We did have one condition of the use being added, and that was to add, so in addition to the landscaping requirement that usually comes, we ask for an additional row of landscaping along the western border between this and the current vacant daycare property, just to help shield that fenced-in play area, and the applicants agreed to that as well. The applicants are here this evening, actually there are four of them at least, they're in the back row to represent the project. We did have someone come share some concerns at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Those were in your minutes. She may, I think she's here as well tonight, if you have any questions for either groups. I will take any questions you may have first, though, and then we can turn it over to them for the public hearing.
Okay.
Kristi, you had showed the fencing material, which looked pretty solid. And then you talked about an additional buffering. Would that be like on the backside of the fencing towards the daycare?
Yes.
Lot?
They show the fencing area, I mean, these three little rectangles here, so that's where we'd anticipate the fencing, and then have the additional row of evergreen trees.
So just like our regular landscaping strip? Or more?
Actually, it's more because we don't necessarily always require landscaping to commercials to commercial, but because this is a use that doesn't necessarily fall within the allowed set, we asked for some additional, we wanted it coniferous and not have to worry about leaf dropping off, you know, in the winter and that sort of thing. So we wanted more of a solid presence of that tree line there.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments from the council?
Do we, I guess I'm curious, just broadly in Urbendale, do we have, like, how many overnight boarding facilities are located within the city at this point in time, if we have an idea?
There may be one, but I'm, and it's in an industrial area. I'm not actually sure if it's
Barking lot?
From 104th? Where's Bark? Is that 104th Street, across from?
Oh, it's on 99th, by the post office.
Okay. Two?
Two, okay. So it's not super common all over, okay?
No. On 99th Street, is it?
It's just to the, it's in that building, it's just to the east of the Spray Tech building.
Okay, got it.
There's one that's south of the fire.
Forty-two.
Oh, and there's forty-two. They don't have boarding?
They don't have overnight. If it's the play, oh, they do. That's where I board my dogs.
And I think some of the vets board too. I think Dr. Righby boards too, does me?
Great question. I clearly do not know the answer.
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, some of the vets board. And are they allowed to board?
And vets are a different category that can include boarding, if it's associated with a vet clinic. I think that's the one I was thinking of on 104th Street.
Yeah, Righby, Dr. Righby.
Yep.
All right.
So I had a question. So do we have any understanding of the indoor/outdoor aspects of how this works? 125 dogs outside in those three little pens at once sounds like intimidation.
I think, oh, go ahead.
I was just wondering, are they, especially if at night there's no staff, are they allowed out at night at all, or ever, or how is that going to work?
Let's ask the applicant, I believe the answer is they're not out there overnight, because the franchise person who was here at the Planning and Zoning Commission talked about how the dogs will react to interruptions and that sort of thing, and so I don't envision any part being overnight.
I didn't think they would be either, but.
That's a good question for the applicant.
So yeah, we are in public hearing on this item. I will allow, I'll ask a representative of the applicant to come up, and then we'll take any further comments, and then the applicant can have one last comment if they'd like at the end. So if you could please come up and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Brad Kewell, Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street in Urbendale. We're excited to be here for this project. Unfortunately, the representative from K-9 could not be here this evening. He was at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the documentation you had in your staff report was reflective of that information. From my understanding, the dogs will not be out overnight. Once they get settled in for the day, or the evening, or whatever, they will not be outside in the evenings. They have many locations across the country. They manage these all over the place, so they know what they're doing, and they're very good at what they do. And yeah, in terms of screening, we are very happy to provide additional screening with the fencing that would be outside of the additional requirements for this project to make sure the project is, you know, acceptable and provides enough screening. I'm happy to answer any of the questions you might have. Again, I'm not the representative for K-9, but I think you have enough information that hopefully that'll answer your questions.
I was curious about, with staff not being on site overnight, is there a staff member that's basically on call in case there's an issue?
That's my understanding. There would be somebody that would be on call for the evenings. They don't actually, again, if something happens with one of the animals, they don't, they contract with a doctor or veterinarian, you know, if something happens. So yes, they have somebody on call that would take care of those.
And I'm assuming along that same line, they're looking for rabies, all the vaccinations for critters?
Absolutely, yes.
And willing to work with the police departments if they have animals that are not licensed?
Yeah, that would be part of their, you know, the registration and the process of them being accepted to the facility, they'd have to have all that information.
And then do you know anything about that practice of how many dogs will be outside at once?
Yeah, they wouldn't have them all outside at once. They would have to rotate them in and out. That would just be general operation in terms of how many they could handle, who was on staff at the time, and in terms of how many they could handle. And obviously, the area outside is not huge, so they would have to, you know, bring them in and out as they go.
Does the outside area there, similar in size to the other franchise areas? I'm assuming there's like a model.
That's my understanding. We were given, we were given a square footage of how much area they needed for large dogs, small dogs, and medium dogs, so that's kind of where these came from. That'll be more detailed out in the site plan when we get to that stage.
Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry, Joe.
Well, I just see that the company has over 145 locations across the United States. Are there any others in Iowa?
Ah, yeah, Linda, you want to talk to that?
Good evening, council members, mayor, how do you do? Yes, there is one other location.
Linda, if you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, mayor. Linda Juckett. I am at 1239 Warren Avenue, incoming.
Thank you.
So I own the franchise for the Des Moines area, Des Moines location area, and we chose Urbendale because there aren't very many here, and we thought we would build a beautiful facility for you. It's called K-9 Resorts. They are the fastest-growing and the most luxurious doggy hotel in the United States, kind of after the Ritz-Carlton, they like to say, so we will follow through with that. But the dogs are turned out, you know, they'll have different playtimes. We stop at 7:00 in the evening, so not to bother other neighbors or anything like that. The dogs, canines, they bark straight out, so they don't bark up, so they bark straight out. So the fence that we're using is the same fence that we use in the DOT to keep sound, you know, mitigation down. So that will help with the sound location in that area. It's the same quality fence, it's the same material fence. We have turf down in the doggy turnout areas. It is not grass. There'll be no digging or anything like that for the dogs. We'll have plenty of staff there, but we do stop at 7:00, so all the dogs will be inside. There will never be a dog outside overnight because we don't do that. So they'll be in little, their cages, their boxes at nighttime, and they get their regular food, and we also have our own dog food and stuff, so. Any other questions? The, there's fire suppression system within the building, of course, and we're looking into getting bids for that. We have a drive up for the parents, as we'll call them, to, you know, stay out of the weather if possible and stuff, so that's why the entrance is located on 128th instead of Meredith's side, so.
Is there any monitoring cameras or anything like that?
Oh, of course.
Okay, that's what I figured. All right.
And with the fire suppression system, and there's somebody always on call, that'll probably be me, so there's always somebody on call. But when there's someone in the building, located within the building, the primary location at night, the dogs don't rest as well. So they've done a lot of research on that, and when you have a human that's walking up and down the halls, that dog's going to get up and look and see what's going on. So it's best if there are no humans within that contact area, so that's why we don't stay at night.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I hope you're still singing.
Oh, thank you. I am, as a matter of fact. Thank you very much for saying that. That's very kind of you.
Beautiful voice.
With, with the pickup and drop-off times, is there kind of peak times that are usually covered, or is that kind of, is it fairly spread through the day?
It's spread through the day, but I would say it's primarily like a daycare, you know? We're most busy when, you know, and a lot of our clientele are young executives that possibly were going downtown, or they're going out to John Deere, you know, over in Johnston and stuff, so a lot of that will be business hours, 8:00 to 5:00, 7:30 to 4:30, you know? And if you work at the hospital, you're going in at 6:00 and getting off at 3:00, so.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You bet.
All right, thanks, Linda. All right, we are still in public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address the council on this item? Any further, you have one last comment, if you have any further comments or not?
Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thanks, guys. With that, then, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote.
Move approval of the, oh, shoot.
Does it come through yet?
Second.
All right, there we go.
Move approval of the amendment to the planned unit development master plan.
Motion by Kroll.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. All right, that passes. Thank you. Thanks, guys. Item eight is to establish a public hearing to consider the preliminary assessment for 142nd Street paving project from Meredith Drive to Waterford Road, and to introduce this is our Engineering and Public Works Director, John Larson. John?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Being that we have not done our preliminary assessment process in a while, I wanted, before we set the public hearing, just kind of run through our process, make sure everybody's up to speed. I think it was probably back in '21 was the last time that we had an assessment project. So a little bit about our 142nd Street project. Our paving length is just a little over 4,500 feet on 142nd Street, and we'll have 223 feet on Waterford Road. We'll be constructing a 65-foot-wide roadway that'll have two 25-foot-wide paving sections and a 15-foot median. We'll have our standard eight-and-a-quarter reinforced concrete pavement. We'll have a 10-foot concrete sidewalk on the west side. There will not be any sidewalks on the east side. That's currently farm field for the Urbendale portion. It's also farm field in the Grimes portion, so those sidewalks will come with development. We will also finish out the 15-foot-wide complete street section on the north side of Waterford Road over to 142nd Street, and then the 5-foot sidewalk will be extended over to the intersection as well. And this is a joint project with Grimes. It was on November 3rd that we approved the 28E with them, and that designated Urbendale as the lead agency. As I mentioned, what we're looking to do tonight is to set our public hearing on the preliminary assessment for January 6th of 2026. So this is our assessment plat, just to kind of show you the properties that are involved. We're starting at the south end of our project at Oakwood Drive, so it's just north of Meredith Drive. In any parcel you see here, these are the property lines that have a number, that's a parcel that is being assessed. So it's over several pages as we work our way north up to Waterford Road. So overall, the assessable costs are just under $2 million. The city's cost is just under 5.5 million, and then the total cost is around 7.4 million. So how the assessment works is we assess for a width of 31 feet. We're using a preliminary assessment amount of $90 per square yard. We'll assess for five feet of sidewalk. We got an estimate of $60 per square yard. In this case, we do have one deficiency within a parcel. Basically, it's an empty lot right now and does not have a house built on it, and it's a large, large pie-shaped lot, so it has, you know, a larger proportion of the assessment. So right now, we do have a deficiency just over $10,000 on that lot. So breaking it down a little bit more, we have 100 properties that are being assessed. 35 of those properties, we received cash at the time of final plat, so their final assessment will be zero. We have 27 properties that were bonded at the time of the final plat, so that basically means if the developer does not pay the assessments, the bonding company steps in and pays those assessments. So again, the property owner's final assessment will be zero. There's 34 properties that actually have a petition in waiver that says they will not challenge any part of the assessment, and there's also a bond to back up the payments as well. So there's four properties that'll have a new assessment. Two of those properties have the ability to claim agricultural deferment, which allows them to delay payments, no interest until which time that their property develops. And then there's one property that has potential to do the acreage reduction. In order to qualify for the acreage reduction, they need to have 150 feet or more of frontage along the property, be at least 1.25 acres in size, and it has to be their primary single-family residence. If they meet those requirements and ask for the acreage reduction, our reduction is 50% of the amount. Basically, this is set up for properties that are large acreages not intending to develop. If they do happen to develop in a 10-year period, they basically, it's prorated, but they have to pay back that reduction. So we do get some money back if they do develop. The one property that we have here is not likely to develop. It's a smaller acreage. So we also do assess for the sidewalk. We have 28 properties being assessed. 17 of those properties paid with cash. Four of them have the bond, and then five have a petition in waiver and a bond. So there's only two properties that'll have a new assessment. Again, one of those properties has the potential to claim the acreage reduction. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So looking at that, for the one, for all of that, there's basically one property that's like totally new assessment with no strings or any other items?
Correct. And the reason is, I can show it on, find it here, it's 64, so it's actually a large flag lot, so they have very, if I remember right, it's like 50, 60-foot of frontage is all they have, all their house and everything's behind. Then a family member is on the parcel 63.
Okay. So this isn't a surprise for anyone, basically, because all of this has kind of been baked in from the beginning?
Correct. As far as like, parcel 64 is a developer. On the other side of the road is a large farm field as part of the right-of-way negotiations. It's even written into the agreement that we wouldn't prevent them from claiming ag deferment if the county agrees, so they know the parcels in the north of them is in the developer's hands as well, so, yep.
Yeah, John, can you elaborate on the properties that are listed as having a petition waiver? What does that mean?
It basically, they, the property, they already signed an agreement that said that they would not challenge the assessment, any of our procedures, anything like that. They waived all those rights, so they just do not have the ability to challenge us.
All right. So we have five items for consideration.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-23.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve resolution 302-2025.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve resolution 303-2025.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve resolution 304-2025.
Second.
Rosendahl, second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote. That passes.
And motion to approve resolution 305-2025.
Motion by Rosendahl.
Second.
Second by Cacciatore. Discussion, please vote.
Processing. It was going so well, too.
It was the sheer amount of resolutions.
It just couldn't handle it.
I will take a voice vote on that one so we can move forward. I apologize. I thought I had the first and second. Rosen, Rosendahl?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Harvard Montgomery?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And as part of this process, we do have a subcommittee of two council members to review any possible assessments on this, and I've asked Pat and Joe to serve on that, just for your information on that, so. All right, moving on to planning zoning items. Item 9.1 is to consider the Merle Hay Mall Amendment to the site plan at 3,800 Merle Hay Road. Kristi?
Very good, thank you. The site plan this evening involves the masonry wall section essentially from Prairie Avenue, which is here, I'm marking with my mouse, down south to Madison Avenue. So this conversation tonight does not extend all the way to Aurora Avenue. It stops just south of Prairie and goes south to Madison. There's some history, starting back in 1973, when the site plan was originally approved for the mall. It included a masonry wall that extended, I'm sure we're all familiar with it, along that western edge of the Ring Road that circles around the mall and then went all the way to Aurora. But the tower's property at 6,200 is under a different But, the tower's property at 6200 is under different ownership, and that's why I say that's not part of tonight's conversation. It just starts south of Prairie and goes south. Over time, especially the last four and five years, we've had some conversations with the mall regarding the failing and missing sections of that masonry wall. We moved forward with some notice of violation and reached a stipulated agreement with the mall ownership and the city in an effort to move forward to get some resolution to that. In that, the mall hired a licensed professional engineer to do a conditions report, and I'm going to flip over to that here in a second. And what they did is they went through and evaluated the 60 segments that go from pier to pier in this extent of the wall. Some were failing, some were absent, some are just fine, some need to be monitored. And so, they broke that down on a segment-by-segment basis. So, we entered the stipulated agreement to address the absent sections, there are six of them, and the nine sections that are remove and replace first. So, this is to keep that moving forward. As part of that, they wanted to request to the city that they get to amend their fence material from the masonry wall to just a solid six-foot wooden stockade fence. And now, I'm going to flip over to the report here for a second. This is what that panel section looks like from concrete pier to concrete pier, and they did include various photos in the report. I know this was a question that came up from council. This is what the current wood sections at the end of Madison and Airline look like. These were done in conjunction with the storm sewer project that came through and went south through the mall property, but they, when we did this, we did approve the six-foot wooden stockade fence. We did this because this was also an option in our current zoning code, and so it's allowable option. It was also in the PUD master plan when we did that rezoning a few years ago. So, the person who asked the question, what does that look like? I wanted to highlight this for you. This is what it looks like right now. So, staff is recommending approval for those 15 sections, actually, staff's recommending approval for the substitution from the masonry to the six-foot-tall wood fence, wherever that may be. This will not happen all at once. They're going to focus on those 15-foot sections first. The timeline is outlined in the stipulated agreement, so should the council approve this tonight, a 30-day clock will start for them to submit their fence permit application. I talked to the mall manager about that process just today, so that's on his radar screen because he knows the 30 days will soon start. Staff recommended approval. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the fence material substitution. There are some conditions that were included in your staff report. One came from the water utility because there are some valves in a water line at the north edge, and they want to make sure they avoid any potential problems with this project. One was to apply to the stipulated agreement filed with Polk County. The third one, and this is why I'm leaving this picture up, was this is going to be the good side goes out towards the residences. So, this is what it will look like from the mall's side with the braces and the posts towards the inside. I know sometimes people are like, who gets the ugly side and who gets the good side? The good side go to the residents. There are about 18 properties. We did send them a notice of both P and Z last week and of the council meeting tonight. Some are rentals, some are only occupied, and we just felt better about putting them on notice because some of them will be directly concerned or directly affected when we get the fence permit started. You know, they'll take the bad sections out, put the good sections in. So, there will likely be some property owners, and I'm mentioning this because Planning and Zoning Commission asked, some property owners will have both materials for a while because the fence section may still be good. That's there, and they can keep that, but the other part may be failing or missing, and they're going to put the wood in place. So, we wanted to make sure that the residents knew that the wood fence was being requested. I did get one email back. I think Steve included that in the packet. They were supportive and just had questions on some timing things, so. Other than that, I'll take any questions you may have. Liz Holland is here representing the mall ownership group, if you have any questions for her.
Can we get that packet? I'm not seeing that in the council information.
I think that is on me. I think I was supposed to include it.
Sorry. I, I think it was a late recognition. I can...
Yeah, all we have is the aerial.
Not the email? Okay.
I will send that over.
I know that some folks, even like this week, both, maybe Blake saw it too.
Yes.
Posted that there is some issue with the wall collapsing. We urged them to contact the city.
Yep.
Actually, contact the mall first and then the city if they weren't getting anywhere. What is the expected timeline, since we can't see that per se?
Oh, sure. One thing I wanted to mention, because yes, we know about the Facebook post, because we got the, I think we got the call, and we gave them the mall's contact information and then figured out where it was, because someone was like, what's contact at the mall? So, that's what I gave them, like, oh, wait a minute. It's actually, because we went out and took a photo, it's up here farther north on the 6200 Aurora, and we've already made, we took a photo, sent it to the property manager. He's like, did someone drive through it? Because it looks that big of a hole. So, we've made contact because it's actually up here and it wasn't part of tonight's conversation.
Will the mall be removing any of those bricks that have fallen into people's property if they are not yet removed? Because some of these walls have collapsed. This is right around the corner from my house. I see them regularly.
Yep, we're going to leave, so this is the opportunity for the mall to meet their neighbors if they haven't done so already. Yeah, they're going to have to talk to neighbors about everything from that to tree trimming to interim, you know, things, making sure dogs don't get loose and all the stuff. So, they will have to have those conversations with the owners. I don't, you know, if the owner wants to just take care of it themselves and doesn't want anybody trespassing, they're just going to have to, this is private property to private property, and this is where you get into the weeds.
So, several seniors in this area, that's all, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Recognizing.
So, there was an email from Tracy Hughes. I'll just read it really quick because it's short. She received the memo from Ms. Holland on behalf of Merle Hay Investors. Although I will not be able to attend the P and Z meeting on the 24th, I want to share I am supportive of this and would very much appreciate the hazard of the wall be replaced behind my property at 4,0964th. And then, she was wondering about a timeline that's not related to this. So, we did get the one correspondence.
I look forward to this getting completed and having fewer dogs running around the neighborhood. I appreciate the acknowledgement of the good side of the fence issue, but I also think there is, you know, a significant investment about to happen at the mall, and there might be some value in having both sides of the fence be considered good. So, I don't know what to do about that feeling, but there is a good side and a bad side of the fence, and to have people driving along the bad side is not the best look, maybe, so I don't know. It might be too late to do anything about it, but I'll just, I just want to make that comment.
Sure. I think I'll point to a concern that one of the planning and zoning commissioners expressed, and it's in the minutes about like, is this, the permanent, is this the final version? What hap, is that project may or may not happen in the next year or two years? You know, what about the status of the fence? There's actually a monitoring condition of the other wall sections that was part of the report, and here's what I shared with them, so you can decide what to do. I said, you know, eventually, we're going to see a site plan again for this, and if something has gone...
For the fence or for the mall?
For the mall.
Okay.
So, if something goes amiss or awry between now and that time, that's, that's another opportunity where if you're like, we need to rethink something or put a condition on something. So, if you don't want to put a condition on that says that tonight, I'll let you decide that, but I do think you will see this again. Maybe it's a site plan, maybe it's a development agreement where if you want to come back and address that, I'll leave that to you as an option.
And there is, as part of the agreement, a plan to remove the masonry entirely over a period of time? Or is that, or is it just when it fails?
Just when it fails.
Okay.
At this point.
Gotcha.
They can do it sooner.
Right.
But at this point, we're really focused on the failing and missing sections. And then, if their monitoring discovers that frost heave or trees or whatever push or failed, they'll have to address that as the issue comes up.
Is there a timeline on, like, if there's a failure found, what is, like, is it a two-month, three-month, whatever, something, there's some sort of window that there needs to be observed?
There's not a window for, like, if something falls in April, how soon they have to get it fixed. They're required by the site planning code to maintain their site plan in perpetuity. That includes the buffer and the landscaping, the fencing. There isn't the immediate term for the 15 panels in terms of, I talked about the 30-day clock for the permit, but also then when that work is to be done and when the landscaping work is to follow up behind it. So, there is for the immediate problem, but I would hope that they just take care of it, and we don't have to worry about putting a timeline for compliance or anything like that on it.
Liz, I know you're here. Do you want to add anything to this tonight? Give you the chance to do it if you'd like. Thank you for being here.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Holland. I'm at 3800 Merle Hay Road in Des Moines, Iowa. I agree with everything that Kristi presented. I think the one variable that was not included, which I think is important for you all to understand, is that of the 15 panels, we've been asked to replace, nine of those panels are failing because of trees growing on the homeowner's side that have encroached the wall and caused it to fail. We will be, once the site plan, if the site plan request is approved tonight, we'll be reaching out to those nine homeowners to ask them how they would like to handle this. Obviously, we can't just go on their land and take down their tree, and while it was discussed in our conversations with the staff, could we notch around the tree? I'm not sure that that's a permanent solution either, given the concern about the aesthetics. I don't know that that would be an improvement. It would probably be a detriment to the visual view of the wall. I can tell you, though, that, you know, 26 years ago, we did request that the city of Urbendale allow us, in conjunction with the construction of the famous Bar Department Store, to let us install a double-sided fence. That was the same fence that was at the time being installed at Glen Oaks, and we thought that if it was good enough at Glen Oaks, it should be good enough at Merle Hay. At that time, the easement between the homeowners and the mall had not yet expired. It was a 30-year easement that went to 2003, and so the city asked us not to move forward at that time. So, we, this has not been a problem that we've ignored. It's a problem with the original construction of the wall, which was constructed without expansion joints in those panels. So, over time, while we were able to replace the panels when it was cost-effective to do so, with expansion joints, at a certain point, it simply became not cost-effective to do so. So, we are looking forward to resolving the issue with the 15 panels that need to be replaced and hopefully come to an agreeable compromise with the nine homeowners that have trees that have encroached the wall. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
When you say encroach, are you meaning the trunk is literally...
They've grown into the wall, and they've caused it to fail. Yes, and we provided, our report provided the photos of those nine trees that have encroached the fence and caused it to fail. And we will not be, you know, obviously, under Iowa law, we can seek nuisance damages from those homeowners. We're not going to seek to do that. We're just going to try to hopefully come to some accommodation on how we can take down the tree so that we can have a consistent, you know, fence line across that length of area.
Sounds like fascinating conversations are in the future.
Good luck with those.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Liz. All right, with that, is there a motion?
Move the approval of council letter 8374.
Motion by Kroll?
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, we got the roll call or vote? Okay, please vote then. That passes. Great, thank you. Thanks, Liz. All right, item 9.2 is to consider the SACME USA Building Addition Site Plan at 3434-106th Circle. Kristi?
Very good, thank you. We are over here just off Justin Drive, west of 104th Street, south of Douglas, in the Walnut Ridge Business Park area. We're here at the end of the cul-de-sac at 106th Street, and tonight's conversation is about a site plan for a building addition onto this building at 3434-106th. The property was rezoned back in '92. They built the original warehouse in 1997. They put on a very large 40,000-square-foot addition and bought the lot that's adjacent back in 2003, and they'd like to do a smaller addition, 400 square foot, onto the front, redo some patio work as well. And I'm going to show you the site plan here. Mostly, the work will take place in this dashed-in area on the south side. Building additions do require site plan review, so we took a look, routed it among all the pertinent departments. We did take a look at the parking. Sometimes, building additions make the parking lot change a little bit different. This actually didn't. This was designed on a parking ordinance, two parking ordinances ago, so they're good in terms of that. They will add the outdoor patio as well, so just kind of extend there to the south as you can see. There's also an interior remodel that's part of their building permit, but for most of the, it's just regular and straightforward. One-story addition, staff is recommending approval. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval, all subject to the conditions that are listed in your staff report. There are some verification things they'll need to do in terms of landscaping and maybe some replanting, some signage redo in terms of parking. Otherwise, we're all good with how it'll go.
All right. Thanks, Kristi.
I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions?
Motion to approve council letter 8375.
Second. Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Great, thanks. SACME, I just want to say thanks to SACME for being a long-term corporate citizen of Urbendale. Just one of those little hidden gems that are there, and they've been a great business in Urbendale. I think they make, what do they?
Plastic closures.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just...
You do a lot more than that.
I didn't realize you were, well, thank you for, thank you for being in Urbendale. Thank you for expanding in Urbendale. We appreciate you being in Urbendale, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've tried over the last 30 years.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, item 10, first is regular gen items versus item 10.1, consider the design services agreement for the Urban Police Department, the headquarters building. And to kick this off, is our assistant city manager, Curtis Brown. Curtis?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The item for consideration before you tonight is resolution 298-2025. This would approve a professional services agreement with OPN Architects for the police department headquarters. This project continues to move forward. In July, we hired Angie Fonku of Sidekick to be our owner's agent. We then continued with site exploration, the geotechnical, the environmental. We continue to move forward. In October, with Angie's assistance, released a request for proposals for design services, closed that at the end of October, went through a process to vet the firms, and so tonight we bring you the proposal from OPN. We did receive 14 responses to the RFP. We interviewed three firms. The consensus choice of the interviewing panel, which was David Jones, myself, Angie, and Chief Johansson, the consensus recommendation was to proceed with OPN Architects. That was based on their familiarity with this proposed building project, having worked with the police department on several other space and facility projects, their principal architect and project manager assigned to this project, their public safety experience, the awareness of our, of the city's environmental stewardship considerations for the project, and then their reasonable fee on the project. Angie will talk next about the, about the, what the firm would do next, but just to point out a few of the items that that will happen is the lots will need to be combined. That'll be separate work done by CDA. Right now, there are three lots. It's a lot easier, no pun intended. It's easier to work on the site plan and the building if they're all just one lot, so that work will need to proceed. The fee is estimated to be somewhere around $2.1 to $2.25 million. That is based on the... That is based on the construction cost at the end of the development of the construction documents. And so all of their fees are laid out in the exhibit A, the scope of services in the agreement that was in the council letter. But once that, once that is determined, regardless of the bid amount, that's the, that's the fee that's paid for the project. The only way that would change is if we came back and incurred more services due to design changes based on the bidding environment. Angie, I'd ask you to come up and talk a little bit about what the next steps are with the architect and the process. And so those were additional questions too.
Good evening. Again, Angie Fonku, Sidekick Development. Happy to be moving on to this next step, hopefully. Our next process would be December 18th, we're doing a kickoff meeting, trying to get a meeting in before the holidays and just kind of lay out the schedule for the next three months. Following that kickoff meeting, we already have January 15th and 16th scheduled with chief and his staff to go through the need study that they had done. Just to verify that we're still on the right track, maybe tighten some things up if, if needed. We do have a police consultant on the team. I wanted to mention one thing, in OPN's fee, I asked for a full team. So that's mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural, AV, police consultant. So that's everybody's fee together. So just to be clear that it's not just OPN, it's everybody else as well. And everybody did present a full team like that, so. But then after the 15th and 16th, OPN will start giving us some ideas, doing some, you know, just block diagrams initially. Also in January, I intend to send out an RFP for the construction manager. So that we could hopefully have them on board in March or April, right about the same time we would be through kind of our schematic design. So that way we can have somebody alongside of us pricing everything and giving us some input from the, from the start, rather than later on in the process. So I would assume we would have some renderings in March. Very high level conceptual renderings in March, probably. So happy to answer any questions that you guys may have. We got great response, like he said, the 14 firms, 12 of them were local. Many of those local ones partnered with out of state firms though, that had a police design, design arm that they didn't have here locally. And then two were totally out of state. So the three we interviewed all had public bid experience, which for me, doing this is super important. Because you don't realize how important that is. Coming from the private world, coming into public, you don't realize how important it is to have the right architect. To make sure your specs are 100% perfect and your drawings are 100% perfect. So we really leaned on the firms that had significant public bid experience as well.
Any questions for Angie or me?
I guess, oh, go ahead.
I'm seeing like six different points in which there's kind of a cost estimate. Is that kind of where we're bubbling up and saying, this is where we're at? Or this is kind of where we're at and then go back under the waves, come up again and say, alright, now we're at here. This, this is what changed, right?
Yeah, yep, that's exactly right. That'll be, and the construction manager will be the one pricing that all the way around. But yeah, it's OPN's responsibility to give us either a narrative and a block diagram. And then as a, as it progresses, specs and full CDs to do all that pricing along the way.
Gotcha.
So we had significant discussion about this project last night in our budget meeting. And a lot of it, in my mind, centered around the bond referendum. So when would, and I know there's a sweet spot of, of doing the public input and outreach, I guess, in that. But at what point would we have an idea of how much we're going to ask for? In that bond referendum, based on?
During design development is where we would kind of set the budget. And that's probably six months from now, June. Yeah. I'm already into January, like June timeframe. So yeah, that's when we would have far enough along with design that we would be pretty confident in the budget. So, but we will have budgeted twice before then, but that's really the number that we would be confident in. And we plan on working up till the day of the referendum. We had initially said like 80% construction documents. I think we're going to see where we're at and how confident we are. And decide if we're going to get to 100 or 80%, so.
And will you and the construction manager be doing the budget? I, I don't mean the budget, the cost estimating based on the?
Based on the drawings.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, so.
That will not be the architect's responsibility.
No, no, that will not be the architect's responsibility. That's why we bring on a construction manager, because we find they have better numbers. They can call, you know, it's not illegal to call a vendor and ask a couple of questions about price per square foot or, you know, cubic yards of dirt. And so they will be calling their trade partners from other projects and asking questions that we get a good outline of what we think the budget will be per division. So per mechanical, per electrical, per plumbing, because when we come in, you guys will want that in your council packet. So that you can see if mechanical was $8 million and it came in at 12, what's the deal? So you, you'll see all that line itemed out.
Great.
Yeah, I see Danielle Herman's name on the contract. Is that the lead architect?
Yes, yep.
And just a, a comment that I, I constantly have is I, I think that, just my personal opinion. The insurance limits seem a little light.
Okay.
And I see that in a lot of our contracts, actually.
Okay.
Something to think about.
Curtis will look into that.
One of the things I saw in here was that OPN has a successful track record of public bond support. Is that something that would be involved in this? Or is there, or is there some sort of separate initiative that is being planned as part of that?
Yeah, we really, we intend to provide that public education. I think we'll ask the architect simply for renderings, those general cost opinions. But we have a level of confidence in making sure the public gets that information. So that's one of those services we've said noted, but we'll just carry on.
I'll move approval of resolution 98-2025.
Motion by Montgomery.
Second.
Second by Bodie. Discussion, please vote. That passes. Alright. Thanks, Angie. Thanks, Curtis. Thanks, chief. Looking forward to the next phase of this, so. Alright, move on to item 10.2 and as the endorsement of the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance application to pursue the C, the Council of Government designation. And to kick this off is our economic development director, Aaron DeYoung. Aaron?
Great, thank you, mayor and council. Aaron DeYoung with the Economic Development Department. Here tonight is to talk about the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance, or MIPA, we'll probably say that many times through this. Which was a recently created entity to, to form an economic development district related to the Economic Development Administration at the federal level. You know, that's been since 2021. I, you've appointed me as the, the person on that group since that time. And so Andrew Collings here, the executive director of MIPA is here tonight. The, the board is, is looking at pursuing council of governments designation related with, with MIPA. And so with, there's, there's history with council of governments in central Iowa. We haven't had one in a long time. And so wanted to make sure that we were very up in front and have you have a full discussion related to this. And so asked Andrew to be here tonight. He's got slides here to do it. If I tried to do this, I would muddle through it poorly. So Andrew is here tonight to do that. So without any more ado, Andrew's going to come up and do it.
Andrew, welcome. Good to see you again.
Yes, you too. Thank you. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. My name is Andrew Collings. I'm the executive director, as previously mentioned, of the Mid Iowa Planning Alliance. So I'm here today to talk about becoming a council of governments, but before I do that. Excuse me, I will do a quick overview. I know I was here last year to give an overview of MIPA and I will not go that in depth. But just wanted to give you a reminder of kind of who we are and what we do. So we are a regional planning organization here in central Iowa. We serve a seven county region. Sometimes we include Madison and a variety of the things that we do, but for all intents and purposes, it's a seven county region. Incorporated as a nonprofit in late 2021. As Aaron mentioned, that was the reason to do that, because we wanted to receive a economic development district designation from the federal Economic Development Administration. And we did receive that in 2022. So member communities pay 15 cents dues. That's on a per capita basis. It's an annual dues. What we do is we take those funds, we use those funds to match a planning grant we get from EDA. That allows us to go out and work on behalf of our communities. And so those types of assistance are technical assistance, grant writing is a, is a big part of what we do. But we also can work with communities on a wide variety of other topics, especially as they need services. So they're able to utilize us for various things like comp plans, housing assessments, grant administration, that sort of thing. So the reason I'm here tonight though, is to talk about a COG designation initiative that MIPA may be undertaking. What, what that entails is I'll get to in a second, but just wanted to note that in, on September 30th. We did, staff emailed all our member community representatives, Aaron included, to inform them of our upcoming, upcoming initiative that we may be pursuing. So we offered to come and presented councils and board supervisor meetings. So far to date, I've had a few of those. We've had really positive feedback from member communities that have, excuse me, inquired about it. I do note, and this is, comes from the staff report that I did at our executive committee meeting. We did reach out to a couple of communities that aren't members right now, and that is the city of Des Moines, city of Altoona, Polk County and Dallas County. They have not talked to us about it or anything, but we just wanted to make them aware, so they couldn't say they didn't know about it. So a vote to whether, on whether to pursue that COG designation is going to take place on December 11th. That will be by, by the full board of directors that MIPA has and includes all our communities, plus a couple of private sector reps that serve on our executive committee. All in all, it's about 70 groups, voting members, I should say, that we have. So it's a pretty big deal when we bring everyone together to, to vote. So when we talk about becoming a COG, what does that actually mean? And it's, it's a fairly simplistic answer, but really what it means at its heart is that we are asking the state of Iowa, state legislature. To add our name, MIPA's name, to a list of COGS in chapter, Iowa code, chapter 28H. That is what we're trying to do. It's the most, at the most basic level. So that designation would specify the area, the counties that we serve. I think there was some discussion about what that actually means. So the list here doesn't say that communities have to be members of their council of governments. It doesn't say any of that. It just identifies the area in which those COGS would serve. And so that, if anyone peruses that chapter in the Iowa code, it's actually a pretty short chapter. It's less than two pages. But basically identifies the other responsibilities that COGS have, and that's to coordinate, coordinating delivery of community development services, grant programs. Basically what COGS do in general. And so moving forward, if we were to be added to that list, we would be subject to 28H. But I will note that that section does not get updated very, very regularly. It actually references a state department that no longer exists. So show you how often that gets updated.
Imagine that.
Excuse me. So what would change if we were to be designated a COG? We being MIPA. Well, one, we would receive additional funding from the state. So it's not a huge amount, about $20,000 based on estimate that we have. But we would use that funding to pay for addition, for staffing, to go out and do more services. We wouldn't give it out to anybody. It would just pay for staff time to be able to write more grants, do more technical assistance, that sort of thing. It would allow us to work with our, what soon to be potentially COG partners across a COG network. So when the state looks to implement certain services, they do utilize COGS to do things. And those include low income tax credit inspections, the I-ones fit for a life program, I waste exchange, healthy 5210 initiatives. Those are all implemented through council of governments. Currently, we don't get to participate in that, in those service deliveries. And that would be a big help, that would be helpful for us to be able to do that. If we became a COG, selfishly, we would get access to IPAT. Realistically, what that means, or IPAT, so that means we would be able to access that funding mechanism. There are very, certain restrictions that are placed in Iowa code on the holding of public funds. And that's all we do is hold public funds. So being able to use IPAT would make it a little simpler and easier for us to do banking and other of those types of services. The next bullet, selfishly, is IPERS. That's a retention tool that has been a little bit of an issue for us. I really do consider ourselves quasi-governmental. We work on behalf of our communities. And the pool of, of planners that we pull from also operate in that space. Not being able to offer IPERS has limited us in our recruitment abilities as we add staff. The, the biggest thing, especially through state code, is that we would also be treated as 28E organizations. So we wouldn't necessarily need to form as one, but we would be treated as such, because in state code in chapter 28H, it says all COGS are treated as 28E organizations. So that opens us up to being able to participate in more activities, while we were still maintaining a nonprofit designation. And the, basically the burden of procurement for certain state services, CDBG in particular, not within Polk County, but in areas that participate in the state's program. COGS are elevated in that space and there are certain things they don't have to do, like procurement for service and that sort of thing. It would be administratively easier, especially as we work with our smaller communities to implement those federal funds. What wouldn't change if we were to, we were to become a COG? One is our membership dues. That's not tied to COG designation. We have no plans to raise dues anytime soon. That has been a question that's come up several times, so just kind of want to get that out of the gate right now. Requiring, requiring communities to be members of MIPA. That has always been voluntary. There's nothing anywhere that says communities have to be members of COGS. That's, it's, it's just not going to change if we were to move forward with that designation. Voting. So again, another question we've gotten. So if we become a COG, how does that change anything? Well, it doesn't. Right now, in our bylaws, we say that each member community gets one vote, regardless of size. There is no mechanism to call for a weighted vote. So that was intentional. Aaron mentioned some potential issues from the COG from a long time ago. That was one that was identified. Is just maintaining the structure that no one large entity would be able to, to do something. So that has been carried over and that does not change with this. The, the whole point of this slide is that MIPA doesn't change. Everything that we do, everything that we are structured around is governed by our bylaws and other governing documents. That doesn't change. That only changes by a vote of the MIPA board of directors. And that is not up for discussion or debate or changing as part of this process. So realistically, what this does, becoming a COG, gives us additional tools and resources to better serve our communities. And I also liken it to a professional membership or professional, that professional designation that people may have. So if someone is a planner or an engineer or economic development professional, they get credentials, right? Well, that just, just describes the work that they do. Doesn't mean that if you're a engineer and you have a PE number, that you always have to be an engineer, that you're forced to do engineering. It simply just describes who you are and what you do. And so what would we have to do for next steps? The most simplistic is that in order to be designated a COG, someone has to go to the state legislature and ask them to add us to that list. So that would be the efforts. There was a previous effort done back in 2007 to add Sheraton Valley to the list of COGS. And that was successful. So that would be the model that we look to if we were to move forward. But also we need approval from the board of directors. So before we, staff does anything, we're going to have that vote, make sure that everyone's on the same page and that we get the authority to move forward. Just want to note that our executive committee did vote to unanimously approve of MIPA, recommend approval of MIPA's COG designation. That happened at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. So should that move forward, what we look to do is just ask our supporting communities to write letters of support. That would be helpful. Resolution, also resolution support, letters of support, contacting your local state senator would be also very appreciative. It takes a lot, even though it's a little simple word change, it does take a lot to move in this, in the legislature. So any support we can get from the grassroots level would be much appreciated. I did have one additional slide. I did get a, there was a question about how, if, what have you, any COG designation would do with the Polk County CDBG program. And so just want to make note, the very shortest answer is it doesn't. And the, the longer answer to that is kind of describing what CDBG is. So community development block grant funding is a source of funding that HUD provides directly to states, cities and counties. It's based on a formula. It's based on being eligible. And so those grants are provided. So in Polk County's case, it's a consortium of communities that have come together to meet HUD's criteria in order to receive CDBG funding. City of Des Moines, city of Ames, city of West Des Moines, they all are just large enough to work with, directly with HUD. But the point of that is that those communities work directly with HUD. And they don't, they don't work with the state, they don't work with anyone else. It's a relationship between HUD and the community slash communities directly. So becoming a COG is just a state designation and it doesn't have really anything to do with HUD's process for CDBG funding or anything else like that. So they just have similar acronyms, but they're not, they're two totally different processes. So that's the end of my slides. I'd be happy to take any questions anyone may have.
I don't know if I really want to know the answer, but I'm going to ask, what was the previous COG that has a negative? I mean, I've been around the planning world here for a while. I mean, I've been around the planning world here for a while, and it's never been in existence, to my knowledge, since 1999. So there's not too many people that are still kicking around, I think, that would have known about it. But if you want to tell us about it and why people might have a negative opinion of it, Pat might know.
I will muddle through as best I can. There's also a report, Professor Carlton at Iowa State did, that can be passed around, that is a very good in-depth guide into what happened. But it was called Surallag, and I don't remember the actual name of it, because it's actually changed names several times. But it, it was a council, it was the largest council of governments in Iowa. It did everything, it had at one point 70, 80 different staff members. It did entitlements for city of Des Moines, it did HUD entitlements for city of Des Moines, it did the MPO, it, it started the WRA. Housing, it did all housing activities, so it was, it was a very large entity. And essentially what happened is, it, nothing to do with being a COG, it just, as an organization, was fundamentally flawed. And so it went defunct, essentially. And so out of that, it had nothing to do with being a COG, a head mismanagement at a managerial level. And so it, it left a bad taste in everybody's mouth is the shortest answer I can give on that. So went from very big to, to been going defunct and communities having to pick up the pieces. And, and MIPA is nothing like that, we do nothing like that in any way, by purpose and design. And so it's, it's really an apples-to-bananas comparison.
About when did it go defunct?
1981, 1982?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Were you on that, Bob?
No. Well, I was alive.
I, I.
Then what was the second organization, the one where some people went to jail?
Oh, gosh.
So we're all for two of these, that's the problem.
Archie Brooks?
Yeah.
Archie Brooks?
Yes.
Pardon?
Was it Archie?
Yes.
Yeah, Archie went to jail.
Yes.
We talked.
We, yes, we did, and, and, yeah.
One, so thank you for that.
Yes.
I'll just ask Pat any other questions if I have them. In the email that we got this afternoon with follow-up questions from David, and you said, mentioned it here, like that Polk and Dallas County had not responded to your request for support, did the other counties?
Yes, so all, so other than Polk and Dallas, all the other communities are members and, and support the work that we do.
So Dallas County and Polk County are not members? So they are not included in your 70-member?
Correct. There, there are a lot of really small communities as well that are just not, just don't pay their $5 or $10 or whatever. But, yes, so those, so, and as well as the city of Des Moines and city of Altoona are the ones. So didn't really request support, we just, here's what might happen, FYI. As it really doesn't affect you in any way, but should be aware of it, more of.
I maybe add a little flavor, because this all kind of came about through MPO, when I was chair of the MPO, and Andrew was at the MPO at that time and was doing the MIPA activities. This all was part of the turmoil that I guess we had at MPO when I was, not because I was chair, hopefully, but when I was chair.
No, it wasn't.
So I, I think there's just, I think, I think some of the, with some of the communities that Andrew's mentioned that are not members of it, there's this, there's nothing rational or logical to it, it's just a, a general distrust of a COG because of prior experiences. So I think Andrew's explained it very well, I think it, I think it's a great, great thing, I think it can do some great things. I saw it do some great things, and it's continuing to do great things under Andrew's leadership separately. So I, I wholly support this, and I think we, we should be supporting this, so.
But I completely agree, but I just, again, as a Dallas County resident, continue to be disappointed by their lack of regional thinking and regional cooperation. So this is just another example of that. I mean, I kind of get Polk County and Des Moines maybe a little more than Dallas, but.
I will say Dallas County has never been a member.
That doesn't surprise me.
The others have been, and they're no, no longer.
Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I see one of the drawbacks that you list is that the state legislature could mess with chapter 28H. And it, would there be like an escape hatch if, if something went really south?
So, so we've actually, that has been a topic of discussion, especially recently, with, with just what's been going on, with discussion of regional initiatives, tax levies, that sort of thing. Realistically, all the COGS are incorporated entities unto themselves. So being, so if they removed themselves, let's say, as an escape hatch, as an escape hatch, they're still doing the same activities they are in the region, they're just not considered a COG, kind of like what we're doing right now. And so i- it's a little nebulous what happens after that. But they're all incorporated in the state of Iowa, doing work with contracts and funding. Yeah. And, and that in particular was a part of a discussion that we had at our executive committee. And that was the city manager for city of Ames, Steve Shanker, who was around for Surallag and brought up those questions.
Andrew, you mentioned that you would receive funding from the state to do planning activities as part of the COG. Is there like a bucket at the state, in the state budget, and then that gets parsed out to each of the COGS, or how does that work?
Yes, so there's, I, on that slide, if you want to pull up my presentation real quick, I have a, I have a screenshot, that's the budget brief, so that goes into IEDA's budget every year. And that is a general bucket of funds that get distributed to all the COGS. And so this is, you could, they do it every year, you can Google it, but yes, it's a, it is a separate line item within the budget.
And by being a COG, it wouldn't, like, you would just be additive to that rather than like the bucket being diluted through?
It probably would be diluted a little bit.
Okay.
But one of the things I liken it to is the housing trust fund network. So kind of a similar situation when the Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund was created, because there were four counties left in Central Iowa, the only four counties in the state not part of a housing trust fund. We, we created that, it diluted the share, which not everyone loved, for one year. But then immediately, the legislature doubled the amount of funds they gave to the housing trust funds, because everyone's part of it now. And so I'm hoping something similar, probably not going to happen, but that's, that's the hope, that's the push anyways. Now that we have the entire state covered, you can now kind of ask for more funds, although in this environment, that's probably not going to happen.
This goes along the theme of, you know, more regional government and providing for better efficiencies and everything else, so.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move approval of council letter 8364 in the spirit of regional cooperation.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Carmine Montgomery, second by Bodie, any further discussion? If not, please vote. All right, that passes. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely, we're full support, thank you. Aaron, thank you for being our rep on it too. All right, moving on to item 10.3, and as to consider the engineering services agreements for the 2026 stormwater project and days run open space Greek repair, and Don, answer any questions if there are. Non，则 accept motions.
Motion to approve resolution 296 dash, six dash 2025.
Motion by Rosenthal.
Second.
Second by Crowell, discussion, please vote. That passes.
Motion to approve resolution 297 dash 2025.
Motion by Rosenthal.
Second.
Second by Crowell, discussion, please vote. That passes. All right, that takes us to the end of our voting items. We'll move on to item 11, which is the special topics information to discuss the waiver of fees.
We're actually going to talk about this tonight?
Well, if you want to, it's not even seven o'clock. Dan, the floor's yours.
I know I can't get through a meeting without the microphone a little bit. Well, it's the time of year, obviously, working on budget, and been talking with colleagues throughout the metro area in regards to their park shelters and fees, and do they charge fees, do they waive fees? What is their policy? And as you know, in the last number of years, as we get a special event request, and periodically, we get a request to waive the fees for our park shelters, we don't have a formal policy. So I guess I just wanted to visit tonight if that's something that is of interest for the city council to either not change anything, implement that we have a policy, so there's some consistency and fairness. Right now, we don't really publicize that we have the opportunity to waive fees. We, as they come in, again, we present them to you, and it's under consent agenda. In my opinion, if we would advertise that, we wouldn't have any park shelters available for rentals, because everybody would be requesting to use them for free. So I did take a poll with the area communities. Currently, we don't have a formal policy, obviously, to, to waive fees, it's just on a case-by-case basis. I did do, put some numbers together, since 2021, we approximately $15,250 in fees have been waived for the use of park shelters. $10,400 is a variety of nonprofits. It could be Parkinson's Association, or SIDS, or MSWAC, or, or things like that. Urbandale School District is $3,000, and those are for like the PTO. Or they did some testing, the high school wants to come over and use Lions Park or Geovannetti for, for testing. We also, the, that number is not included. We have a number four to six times a year that we do not rent the senior center or Lions Park shelter because of larger events that are held at the high school, and they need the parking. So that's not reflected in anything that we're talking about tonight. But again, working with the school district in regards to that, I've been good partners. And at $1,900 over that five years with the Urbandale Chamber of doing their different events at the Geovannetti Shelter for meet the, meet the different candidates and things like that. So we reviewed what other communities are doing, and Ankeny, Clive, and West Des Moines, they don't waive any fees. All users are required to pay the established shelter fees, nothing is waived. Special event application fees, we are by far the lowest fee. It's $25 to submit your application fee, staff goes through all the process, we work with Maria, we get all the, the process, and, and we bring it to you. So West Des Moines is the most at $225. Clive is 75, Waki is 75. Again, part of the discussion tonight is not about our special event application fee, but essentially of, of is there an interest or palatable for the city of Urbandale to consider having a policy? And if so, do we want to model it or be consistent with some of the area communities and what they're doing? Not waiving any fees, we do have a recommendation of that's something that you wanted to, to pursue. One is any organization, we already do it, if they want to work with Parks and Recreation and partner with us, then obviously there wouldn't be fees, and we do that throughout the year. We would recommend that, one, the Lions Club continue to be able to use the Lions Shelter with, obviously, not paying for those Thursdays. Fourth of July Committee uses, obviously, the, the park and the shelters and the senior center and, and Geovannetti and things like that. So that would be one of, consider an exception. And the Urbandale School District, again, we have the reciprocating, where our MAC program, we use the, the three of the schools during the year. Obviously, it's a program that helps their students. The school district, again, uses the tennis courts, the softball, a lot of different, the PE at Lakeview, a lot of the outdoor. Obviously, that's not what we're talking about, of the use of the outdoor. One of the things that we did discuss, though, among staff and with David, is we do incur costs of cleaning costs. So like the Urbandale School District, the PTO wanted to use the Geovannetti Shelter for an event or a PTO event. We would recommend that consideration of that they would pay at least the cleaning cost, which is between $125 and $140, so we're not losing money, the city's paying for somebody else to have an event. So that is essentially recommendation or just the discussion piece of rental fees and the policy. I just drafted a potential policy, again, it's a discussion piece, but that all groups, organization, individual, regardless of nonprofit status, charitable mission or affiliation are required to pay the established park shelter fees. And the rationale is to ensure fairness and transparency for all groups. Because right now, it's just some here and some there, and some aren't aware of it. To reduce administrative burdens related to reviewing fee waiver requests and provide necessary revenue to maintain and improve park facilities. Obviously, what rentals we bring in, some of them, like Lions Park, essentially just covers our costs. So we do have costs to maintain, and as we're going into the budget year and some, some tougher budget decisions, we thought it was appropriate to bring this forward. If it's something that you want to consider, we could bring something more formal together. Or if it's something saying, you know what, we're good with where we're at, just wanted to bring it forward and get your, get your thoughts.
In your research, did you find any examples of policies where they had a rate separate for nonprofits? For certified 501(c)(3)'s?
I guess not specifically in regards to where, like Waki has one facility, four hours per month. The maximum must be Waki ba, it's, it's a lot of layers to it, that would be very challenging with our sportsmen. Johnston does like a half-a-day rental at 50% fee, 501(c)(3) only. So there's a lot of different, Johnston and Waki, but the, like I said, Ankeny, Clive, West Des Moines, so it's just a whole lot easier. And we do get organizations that come to Urbandale, because Clive, West Des Moines, Waki, they don't waive fees, or their special event, even to West Des Moines, like ours is $25. Even to just submit a special event application is $225. So there's a lot of different ways that different communities are, are looking at it.
Did you talk to Windsor Heights, and I mean, they have a, probably, and, I mean, nice, new, shiny facility, and I was just wondering, and it seems to be used all the time. So I, I was just wondering if what their policy, if what their policy was.
It's a lot cheaper than you would think.
Really?
I thought about it, it was so pricey.
Really?
Yeah, but I wasn't a 501(c)(3) when I was coming. And I do have a spreadsheet with all the rates, I just don't have it printed out here. That's where, if it's something you wanted to have us provide more information, happy to do that. This is just kind of testing the water of, as we're going into budget time, it seemed appropriate time to, to bring it up and see if it's.
Jan, what are examples of, you, one of the first things you said was if they wanted to partner with the Parks Department. What are examples of those sorts of?
Yeah, we've done it with Ucan, Lions Club, the school district.
On like events?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
My old nonprofit.
Yeah.
What, you said 15,000 waived, since when?
Since 2001, so the last five years. It's not a huge dollar amount, I think it's more, it's not necessarily the dollar amount, it's the fairness and consistency of. And it's.
Whether you want to see, whether you want to see these things come in, you know, what basis would you use to say yes versus no?
Certainly helps with staff.
Feels a little.
Of being able to, to have something to refer to and.
I know we've had discussion about the rental rate fees, especially at Geovannetti. And so, you know, I appreciate that we allow the nonprofits, I guess, that ask to utilize the facility free of charge when, when they ask, I guess. But, I mean, I guess, and you, you've indicated, you know, Waki has a layers of, you know, different things. I mean, if we just had a rate for 501(c)(3) organizations, and just your grad parties or, you know, corporate events or whatever, that would seem to make some sense to me.
And it could just be a percentage reduction, so it's just across the board, whatever that percentage you decide. It would be, that would be when we go about it, I think, it would allow it to be consistent, and we would probably. Would it be Urbandale 501(c)(3) or any?
I was thinking any 501(c)(3).
I mean, I, I appreciate the Urbandale, you know, based organizations, I mean, but, I mean, if it's the, you know, March of Dimes, or, I mean, it's a good organization that they may just choose to office and.
that they may just choose to office and, you know, Clive, or, you know.
Well, and most of your nonprofits serve the region anyway. I mean, and, and we could get into lots of conversations of why most are housed in Des Moines, and I'm not going to get at that here. But there are some political pressures that are at play that I think need to be considered of why folks aren't in Urbendale as well.
With, for the, what am I thinking here? The hotel motel grant stuff, is that, this wouldn't necessarily be something where a group could come in and say, well, we'd like two hundred bucks to rent a shelter or whatever for a certain event.
That, that process, I don't think is nimble enough to, to do on a regular basis. That's why we looked at the idea of a policy to where it's replicable. Council makes a policy decision rather than things coming in on an agenda periodically and you've got to decide, do we want to do this? Do we not want to? I mean, that just puts, I think, policymakers in a difficult position. But if we, you know, if the council's interested, we could come up with a couple of different approaches and come back with discussion on, you know, a light and a heavy or whatever, you know, to make sure that we calibrate it right, but.
That'd be helpful.
The idea of getting a policy in place that then staff can execute, is, is there value in that? Rather than.
Yes.
Well, and.
Being in a position of having to do case-by-case, which I, you know, you can do, but it's probably not ideal. And this is consistent with, I think, the decision the council made regarding, like, permit fees, for example, where you made, made the hard decision, you know, do you want to do something similar here? And settle on a number, and then we execute that policy in the future.
Something I think we need to be aware of is, in the hotel motel tax process, we did set aside funding specifically for sponsorships. And so I will want to be careful to be able to differentiate between what's a sponsorship versus what's a rental fee. And I, I mean, we did that specifically with some concepts in mind. But I do think we run into the opportunity for overlap that we need to be aware of.
Yeah, David, it'd be helpful to me to, to see maybe a couple of different options and also the spreadsheet to see how we compare with surrounding communities.
Scott just did mention he looked up Windsor Heights. They do give discounts for nonprofits, but not on Saturdays. So that's something we'll need to consider as well.
Yeah, that's.
Because it's usually for, like, meetings or your, your group focus or, like, panel discussions or what, whatnot.
And even a fundraiser you can run on a Thursday or Friday or a Sunday. Yeah. But a wedding is pretty much going to be a Friday or Saturday.
Yeah.
I know, I've played enough of them. That's a, that's a good thought.
Yeah.
Well, we're happy to, to work on that. We'll talk about it and bring something back to you.
So you're gonna do a kind of a carve-out for Urbendale Schools and the Lyons Club? And that's kind of what you're looking at?
I guess that's what we'd like, some direction from you as well, and that's what we'd bring forward. That's kind of our, our recommendation in regards to the Lyons Club and Fourth of July. And, you know, the school district, they don't use it a ton for inside the facilities, but that's our recommendation, at least to pay the, our, our hard costs of cleaning fee and so forth.
Right.
Do, that would be new, though, you know.
That's a new.
Do we want, do we want at least recover the, the hard cost of the cleaning fee where we're physically paying somebody to do the work?
Because we haven't done that to date.
I mean, I think that in these times, it makes sense to recover that fee.
It would also be helpful to understand how you might define, I think that sounds a little anal, but conceptually what it really means to be partnered with Parks and Rec. Because then what we're offering someone is a, a free option, essentially, because they're our partner. And so they're doing something that's clearly directly related and supportive of the community in some way. And then we'd have a discount for 501(c)(3)'s, maybe some restrictions on dates, but we don't have to get overly anal about that part. And then we'd have these pre-established partnerships, and then a regular rate.
Something like that, seems like it could be workable.
I don't know if Ucan ever rents, but I'd like to maybe see them considered as, as one of these, along with the Lyons Club and Fourth of July Committee, just because, I mean, we, we help fund them.
Right. Well, they're, they're really kind of doing a community, a major community function, it seems, that we're partnered with, doesn't it, on the Fourth of July thing?
Maybe there's a connection between if they're already have an agreement with us through the 2080 process. I don't know. I mean, something to think about.
Yeah.
It would have to be clearly defined because we have lease agreements with sports associations.
Yeah, true.
We went away from that about fifteen years ago.
Somebody come in and ask it. But we, we've got more work to do. We'll.
We certainly.
We'll sharpen our pencil and come back with two or three different ways to pursue that.
With more information. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. All right, moving on, City Managers' Report, David.
Just in the interest of time, very quickly tonight, I just wanted to make comment about the snow, snow removal operations. Received a lot of positive, all positive, one hundred percent positive feedback. Former council member, retired city manager, who I won't name, might live on the west side of Urbendale.
On a corner lot.
But, but regular folks, just regular, you know, you know, significant phone call, a voicemail, and just somebody who gets cabin fever when it snows. I'm from the south, so when it snows eleven inches, I get itchy. I don't know what it is, but I have to get out and I have to drive all the suburbs. And I just will tell you, the, the streets were in excellent condition in Urbendale. And they did a bang-up job. And so I've shared a few of those with John, but they just, you know, I've driven a lot of streets over the years. I think the work that our team did was really incredible. So that's all I have.
Thanks. And I said the same thing to John, and I, I, so thanks to our team, John. Make sure they know that, so. Everything I saw, all the comments I got, emails, everything, we're all positive, nothing negative. So thank you very much, so. Amy?
It looks good timing or not, but our annual snow meeting is tomorrow.
Miracle on 86th Street was great. Lovely opportunity. Glad we got Pat there. Sorry we missed Joe.
I don't think Joe was too upset.
Next year, maybe we get everyone. We're making progress. I was also going to say, the joke in the office today was that I have council and they, they said, oh, how many comments are you going to get about snow removal? I said, zero, because it was great. And that ended up being a twenty-minute conversation about where they lived and how bad the snow removal was. So kudos again to our team here as well, so. Swearing in is next week. I'm finally telling people about it, so, yeah, we'll see what happens. That's it.
Thanks. Blake? Oh, I'm sorry, Joe. I thought I started, never mind, I'm sorry.
I think we should bring that to the parker. I like it.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. Never mind, I'm sorry.
I don't have much. I appreciated, enjoyed seeing the media coverage relating to Merle Hay and specifically the shout-out to Curtis Brown. That was in the, I assume you saw that? And so, great job, obviously, and, and it was good to see, see you recognized there. And, and the other thing I just wanted to mention is, I, I do appreciate all the staff, you know, being here late last night, being here late tonight. I work late for my job, and I don't like it very much, so I appreciate all of you. That's all I've got.
Sorry.
Well, never mind, I.
That's it.
No, I'm, I'm done.
Now, Blake.
We're all going to behave tonight, is what, is what I'm hearing. So echoing the thanks for the snow removal and the CIP work that's been done so far. I'm pretty happy with what we're seeing so far and looking forward to next week, talking about that. I am sadly going to be missing the swearing-in. I do have a Bravo regional rah-rah where they're going to be announcing the, the operating grants and some other stuff there, too. So there'll be a thirty or nine o'clock on Monday or something. So when that's officially unveiled, then we can all shout it from the rooftops, what's going on. I do have a Bravo meeting tomorrow where we're going to be doing some voting on operating grant stuff as well. So I can't say anything until they actually officially announce, but I'm looking forward to reading that agenda tonight because I have not gotten a chance to do that. That's all I got.
All right, I thought you were going to maybe give us a teaser that, looking forward to it.
I wish I did.
Bridget?
Well, Snow Removal was great, although we stayed inside the whole time with the new puppy. I'll mention that as many times as possible. And you know what I was reading on the consent agenda? You don't need to have a license until they're six months old. So I'm good. But the Miracle on 86th Street, I mean, that event was amazing. My brother was here from Denver where they really lean into being a winter destination, and he was really impressed with it. So I take that for high praise, and my kids enjoyed it. They did ask for a warming hut for next year for the princesses. But, yeah. Just such a fantastic event. And they went this weekend, and there was tons and tons of people there. Normally, they, they said they've come in years past and had to get their timer going on their phone, and there were plenty of people to take their required selfies, so. But imagine, there was a DART meeting today, so I have an update, and it's not what I was expecting the update to be, unfortunately, all of it. But the good part is we approved the Reimagine DART plan. And that was a very quick, efficient process, fourteen months to come up with an entirely new network redesign.
Was it unanimous?
Yes, it was. So implementation of the new plan will begin June fourteenth. And the Ankeny and Urbendale Clive On-Demand Services will not begin until the fall. They have currently something like fourteen hundred bus stop signs in the metro, in the communities, and will be going down to around nine hundred. But that's a lot of work to change out all those signs. And as we know, we have to move bus shelters and things like that. So there's lots and lots of work to do, but it will begin right away. Just a few highlights. The average resident of the DART service area will now be able to access fifteen percent more jobs under the new system. There's a significant increase in weekend transit access throughout the network. And it just, a tremendous feat was achieved by the staff, consultants, member communities, and the community at large to get such a big lift in such a short amount of time. Unfortunately, last night, Bondurant voted three to two to begin their withdrawal process. This doesn't come as a huge surprise, but staff over the last several months has created a paratransit-only option, which we thought would be of significant value to Bondurant, as well as Pleasant Hill. There were very specific guidelines that you had to meet to be able to participate in this paratransit-only option. So like a Clive or something like that, that is fully in the metro, could not opt out to just do paratransit only. But if you're on the fringes, you'd be able to do this. So Mayor Elrod attended the meeting in place of their DART rep because the DART rep was so upset she couldn't face the commission because her advocacy did not work out. So Mayor Elrod said the council determined that there was no value in public transit for Bondurant, which just broke my heart. And also, the three-year commitment to stay in DART that was required by participation in the paratransit only was too big of a lift for them. So it really wasn't about the money. It wasn't really about anything but not believing in public transit. So that was incredibly disappointing, but I do appreciate that Mayor Elrod attended the meeting in person to give the news. And then, as several of you pointed out to me, Councilmember Coleman of the Des Moines City Council sent out a Facebook message going, going out in style disparaging the Reimagine DART plan and then an entirely new set of concerns related to Ward One that were never brought up during the reimagine process. And continuing to perpetuate false narratives about the funding formula. So that was incredibly disappointing considering twenty-four hours. When we were sitting here last night, I thought we were going to have this, you know, Go DART Commission meeting today, and then we had these things kind of spin out today. So that was really unfortunate, but we cannot lose light of our new plan that is going to be smaller, but I think more appropriate for the time that we're in. But again, it goes back to, you know, who wants to be part of our region and who doesn't? And people need to start making that decision. And, you know, it's just really disappointing that we've seen it happen with Grimes, Bondurant, and Pleasant Hill. We don't have word on Pleasant Hill if they're going to stay in as a paratransit only. I don't have a lot of hope, but, you know, these communities are really not consulting with their residents. They're just, you know, making huge assumptions about the need for public transportation in their community. So, so, yeah, that's what I have, budget coming up with DART. We've really worked through most of it, so it shouldn't, none of it will be much of a surprise. We had to do a lot of that work prior to the reimagine plan, so. I wish I had better news, but.
I think you've got great news. I think, Go DART. I mean, these, this is going to be a wonderful initiative, and I think some of those who have not signed on are going to be sorry, and they may well come back into the fold at some point. These, these things happen when you have to make a big change. You've done an amazing job. The entire DART group has done an amazing job. There, there was a lot of good public input opportunity. People had a lot of opportunity to participate and be part of these choices. And I think they made reasoned choices based on the resources they had available. So I congratulate you and all of the DART Board for your work, and thank you greatly.
Thank you, Pat.
And Go DART. I think it's going to be as good as, I think, I think we're going to be really pleased with it.
Yeah, there will be a lot of public input and engagement and education over the next six months as we transition to a very different plan than what we currently have, so.
Well, and they did such smart things. Like you mentioned, the jo-, they were looking at jobs. They were looking at where people live. They were looking at people who had trans-, you know, cars and didn't. I mean, they really did a thoughtful job, and I don't see why we can ask, I don't see how we could ask for anything more than that.
Well, thank you. I will pass that on to our staff because that's my biggest concern is that we keep yo-yoing our staff, and we have an incredibly talented staff, and.
I was just going to say that. As someone who works with DART on the outside on a regular, consistent basis, you don't get better public servants than the folks that work at DART. You just don't.
Well, I appreciate all your support through all this process. I, I will say, I think Urbendale was probably the, the most engaged community throughout the process, and I appreciate all of you having my back and caring about public transit, and.
Well, you made sure we did.
Well, you really had no choice, but you could have ignored it. Thank you.
Well, I'm just going to say ditto to everything, except I do have to give the endorsement of the eighty-sixth street, Miracle on 86th Street by the Buscher Brothers. Oh, my gosh. Jack and Teddy had the time of their lives. How they survived the train, I'm not sure. I think I did a lot of catching. Anyway, it's just a fantastic event. Snow removal is excellent. All the support on CIP, wonderful. Ditto to everything. But, but to get to take your grandkids to something that they walk out of there saying, thanks, Papa, that was really wonderful. Or they're screaming and crying. Uh, or they're screaming and crying because they don't want to leave. We had both extremes. Um, it's really great, so thank you. Uh, and real quick, uh, Watershed Management Authority Walnut Creek is looking for opportunities, Jan, to talk about Walnut Creek watershed stuff at maybe events that we're holding. So, maybe you and I can talk about that at some point where they could have a table. I know about Sustainable Urbandale with the library, that's great, but there might be other opportunities and I want to be able to tell them about it.
All right, uh, I don't have anything further, I don't think, from any of my representations, Catch Des Moines, MPO, there's really nothing earth-shattering going on any of those right now, so. With that, uh, we will, is there a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Twenty-one point five-one J regarding real estate. Motion, my buddy, second.
Yes, second.
Second, Mike Crowell, discussion, roll call, or please vote.
Really, you should be proud of the dark, you know? It was just a. Oh, okay. It was just a. Today, that Joe had texted me earlier.
All right, that passes.